With eight fields, you're gonna have a max of thirty-two teams. So we started doing the math, and with thirty-two teams, I said, how many people roughly come in on a team? He said, you have eighteen to twenty members on a team. He said, you have to have a paramedic on site, and you have to have a coach. So we figured, and then adults come along as chaperones. He said, no, only every kid, parent doesn't go along. They usually have eight to ten people. So we used twenty or thirty-three people per team coming in. So the max, max team of thirty-two teams per weekend... Well, it's twenty-four, twenty-four days, it's a weekend, so, but it's twelve tournaments, so twenty-four nights. Um, with you, if you take those figures and divide it up, um, every person would have to spend two thousand nine hundred and some dollars each. Now, we were at a meeting the other night, and it came up even less than that, eight hundred and some dollars, I believe. But when I did the math again with what Matt had told me, the number to me was way higher, way escalated. And that's every man, woman, child, everybody, to bring in seventy-five million dollars a year. There's no way it's gonna bring in that kind of money.
You know, honestly, I have to ask this question because we, we've talked about this, and really, you know, you guys wanna meet with, anyone that wants to meet with commission can set up and go on the agenda. We're gonna meet with them, but we're really not in this issue. It's the Tri-County Lodging Association that put it on the ballot, and, uh, the commission really doesn't have...
Does, does the county have the ability to pull funding from Tri-County Lodging Association?
I don't believe so. They've got their own funding mechanism.
They've got their own funding.
I have a question for you.
Sure.
You mentioned that you weren't notified that this is going to be thrown in the ballot? And I'm not real familiar with the way TCLA, CBA are set up. Don't you guys have like, like two representatives on the board from small resorts?
Yeah, there's two small, two medium, two large.
Are you, are you guys notified about other things they do?
Um, I am not. I have not been notified. Um, I do know on the list, my parents previously owned this resort. It shows, still shows her as a representative, um, but also resort to store with three quarter deeds as well, that I remember of...
I don't exactly how they operate. I didn't know if that's standard practice.
But yeah, you're, I don't, I mean, you're supposed to get, you're supposed to get information of when the meetings are, and I don't get those. Um, and as far as I remember, I haven't even ever got the vote who's in there. So I feel like they are not reaching out to us like they should be. And I know they have a meeting tomorrow as well, only through another voice that they took over.
Any other resort owners here that...
I represent several small lodging facilities that are here today, but I wanted to talk a little bit about, you'll probably be happy to know, I'm not gonna talk about soccer fields at all. I wanna talk a little bit about the structure that's in place right now with regard to the lodging tax, okay? Uh, we got three entities that are kind of involved in that.
Excuse me, could you state your name for...
My name's Dave Huffman, H-U-F-F-M-A-N.
Thank you.
Okay, you got three entities kind of we're really talking about. We're talking about the Lake of the Ozarks Area Business District, okay? Now, that's the political subdivision, or the, the special district, if you will, that is entrusted to administer this lodging tax. Then you've got TCLA, Tri-County Lodging. Tri-County Lodging is a private entity, okay? And then you've got the Lake of the Ozarks, or the Convention and Visitors Bureau, which is a little bit of an offshoot, in my opinion, of the, of the Tri-County Lodging Facility. So, when it comes to the commission, and I appreciate your willingness to, to meet with us today, but when it comes to the commission, your only charter, I guess, for lack of a better term, is that you're, by state statutes, you're obligated to oversee the Lake of the Ozarks Area Business District, much like you would an ambulance district, a fire district, right? The school board elections, okay? So I wanna go back just a little bit and take a couple of minutes and give you a little bit of historical perspective, so everybody's kinda in the same place with, with what I'd like to talk about. Okay, this business district, this business district to collect lodging tax was formed in nineteen ninety-three, okay? Now, state statutes said at that time, what was supposed, and still says, what was supposed to happen is the procedures that Camden County was required to follow. And I wrote this down because obviously I get a little older, can't remember things anymore, right? So feel indulged me. But Camden County was required to, to, required to follow and impose the lodging tax, and that's spelled out in chapter sixty-seven of the Missouri Revised Statutes, okay? It says the county commission, you folks, was to establish an advisory board that would govern the business district, okay? The advisory board was to consist of six members that were to be elected from the business district. Now, there's no question that elections to a public or a special district like that would be under the, the rules of the election laws, correct? Proper elections, certified elections, okay? But that's governed by the state law, and that requires the county clerk to, to oversee that election, okay? Once elected, this advisory board was supposed to make a written recommendation to the commission to set up a vote for this lodging tax, okay? Only after receiving authorization from this elected advisory board was the county commission authorized to put the lodging tax on a ballot before it can be voted on. So here's what actually happened. In nineteen ninety-three, the commission just voted to establish a Lake Area Business District, okay? The clerk was ordered to conduct an election, and there's no minutes, and there's no advisory board in existence for the business district to do that, okay? There's no minutes that reflect that there's a, that there's a commission that had any recommendation for an elected advisory board, and in reality, a private trade organization took it upon itself to form a board, okay? In April of ninety-three, two individuals just signed a document recommending to the Camden County Commission that a lodging tax proposition be submitted to a vote. This is what happened, okay? There's no meetings, minutes, or records of any kind made by any advisory board of the Lake of the Ozarks Business District. This board was an invention of the Lake of the Ozarks Association, which is owned by, which was, at the time, was owned by the Convention and Visitors Bureau, okay? Camden County Commission did nothing to select any of the six members for this advisory board. So, in closing with that, this advisory board, or this, this, this Lake of the Ozarks Area Business District was not properly formed in the beginning, and that has continued on for the last twenty-five, twenty-six, whatever years. Okay, now, here we are today, okay? People talk about TCLA. When we opposed during our, we had a lawsuit with Camden County, with the Lake of the Ozarks Business District, and with TCLA that went from two thousand seven to two thousand twelve, or twenty-twelve. When we deposed the clerk at that time, or the collector, she had no knowledge of anything called the Lake of the Ozarks Business District. All she knew of was Tri-County Lodging. Tri-County Lodging's a private entity. Tri-County Lodging is not allowed to spend public funds, okay? That's vested in the Lake of the Ozarks Area Business District, which really doesn't even exist. And the reason it doesn't exist is because there is no board for that district, okay?
Isn't the business district, I'm sorry, I need to break in, I just, 'cause I'm not real clear about this either. Is the business district authorized to contract with a private entity like TCLA?
They are, but that's, that's taken under the assumption that there is a business district. Okay, number one, the business district was properly formed. Number two, do you have an election for the ambulance district, for the fire district? And those elections have to be overseen by the person in the county that's to do that, the county clerk, right? People can come to polling places, they can vote. They have to be registered to vote in the state of Missouri to place a vote. The, the board members for this Lake of the Ozarks Area Business District, which, they're Tri-County Lodging board members when that suits them. When I requested information from them in two thousand five to two thousand twelve, they didn't provide that with me because they're a private entity. But when they wanna be a public board and part of the business district, they transform into that so that they can collect these funds, okay? So the way they hold their elections for this advisory board that claims to be the Lake of the Ozarks Area District Board is they bring an envelope to Roland down in the clerk's office, okay? They give him the list of people that can vote. They're lodging owners, okay? The people elected to that board are not vetted. We don't know if those people are eligible to hold those positions. Number one, and you all know from an election, those people have to be eligible, be qualified, to hold that position, correct? The other part of that is the people that vote are not vetted. They're not registered to vote. We don't know if they're registered to vote. We have no idea who these people are. I mean, we sort of do, they're lodging owners or members of a lodging facility, but a proper election can only be conducted if you have a candidate that's qualified, number one, and you have to have a voter that's, that's registered to vote and eligible to vote. That doesn't happen. People come in, if their name's on the list, they check off their name, sign it, they vote, put it in the envelope.
So there, there's no list of written qualifications then?
Not to my knowledge, no. Now, these votes are taken here at the clerk's office. Somebody from Tri-County Lodging, which again is a private entity, comes to the clerk's office and gets that envelope, okay? Take that envelope. We don't know where it goes. They would have to tell you. Several weeks later, when they have a Tri-County Lodging meeting, they count those votes there. They also allow you to vote while you're at the meeting, and they also allow absentee votes. What happens to that envelope between the time they pick it up to the time that it gets counted? We don't know. Is that a properly held election? That election's not certified by the county clerk? Isn't that a requirement for a valid election? Doesn't that election have to be certified?
I'm not sure in this case, but could, does this include the other counties as well? Do you guys all vote?
I, I don't know about that. I'm talking about Camden County, which I think is all we care about.
Yeah, we, you know, this is stuff we're gonna have to look into with regard to...
That's fine.
Yeah, this is, the, the... Can I say something?
Sure.
I think we're confusing apples with oranges here. Under the current statutes, the county commission has nothing to do with this issue. And what section, what section are you referring to?
Section sixty-seven point one-one-seven, seven point six states, "The county commission shall adopt rules and regulations for the collection and administration of the tax." Now, if that doesn't give them authority to oversee this, I don't know what does.
You say section six?
Section sixty-seven point one-one-seven, seven point six. That whole section sixty-seven is kind of part of the Lake of the Ozarks Area Business District.
That refers to the collection and administration of the tax. Actually, it was the Camden County Business District that passed a resolution and order to put it on the ballot. County Commission did, it's the county clerk that is the election official in the county. It's not the county commission. County Commission has no issues, or no involvement in this issue.
Well, then, why does this document from ninety-three to the Camden County Commission from this supposed advisory board make this recommendation? That's in the state statutes as well.
I have no idea. I haven't seen that document.
I would like to see it.
Oh, I'll look at it, sure. But I'm referring also to sixty-seven eleven seventy-seven, also to sixty-seven eleven seventy-five. It says that six members shall be elected by members of the County Lodging Association.
Right, the district.
Right. Not by the county commission?
I, I didn't say the board members were elected by the commission. They're elected by the voters. Do those voters have to be registered to vote in the state of Missouri? Or can it just be anybody?
The statute, the statute doesn't say.
Well, it's assumed that if you have an election for a public board to manage a public entity...
The statute doesn't say.
It doesn't have to. A public entity has to fall under election laws if they're gonna elect a board. They're spending public dollars. Well, let's back up. Are they spending public dollars?
That says who?
Absolutely. This is lodging tax collected from the lodging owners, correct? Okay, it's a business district. It's a political subdivision. It's no different from an ambulance district. It's no different from a fire district. It's no different from an election for a school board. Would you agree with that?
I don't know why that was sent to the commission.
Would you agree that this Lake of the Ozarks Area Business District is the same as any other special district, like a fire district or ambulance district?
It's, it's actually the Camden County Business District.
Well, they go by a lot of names, so it's hard to keep it straight, who they are. Or Tri-County Lodging.
Yeah, it's, it would be similar to our district, ambulance district, road district. And the county commission has no involvement in their elections.
It says... We have no authority over those either.
Yeah.
They have no authority over them.
I mean, we explain this statute sixty-seven one-one-seven, seven point six, where it says, "The county commission shall adopt rules and regulations for the collection and administration of the tax." I understand the county clerk's office is responsible for the election oversight. Does not the commission have some oversight over the county clerk?
Not really.
No, not really.
The people put him in office, they're elected and it's been...
Okay, so, so, let's go back with your, your commission should have rules and regulations for the collection and administration of the tax. That's in the statute.
Yeah.
Do you agree on that?
Yeah.
Do you have rules and regulations in place to oversee the collection and administration of the tax currently?
Yeah, uh, that's something we may have to look into. This is pretty old stuff.
Yeah, they would go back to whatever.
And it's never, it's never really been brought to the forefront before.
Okay, in twenty-twelve, during our discovery, we discovered you did not at that time, okay? So that would've had to have been done between twenty-twelve and now, okay? So let's look at that section. There's never been a public election with people that were eligible, or at least vetted to know that they were eligible to hold these public positions, voted on by individuals who were registered to vote in the state of Missouri. There's never been an election for this board in the entire time of its existence or non-existence, okay? That's not speculation or an opinion. That is what has occurred. The Lake of the Ozarks Area Business District has no minutes. They have no meetings. They have no meeting minutes. There's nothing to show that the Lake of the Ozarks Area Business District has contracted with TCLA to administer this tax. Yes, they would have the right to do that, but that's never been done. The TCLA board, which is elected with this little puppet show of bringing a vanilla envelope and taking the vanilla envelope, and who knows what happens to those votes during that time? They can have whatever kind of board set up anyway they want. They're a private entity. But when they need to, they become the Lake of the Ozarks Area Business District Board. That's where the problem is. Because they're collecting taxpayer funds, public funds, and they're spending them. And that's where the commission has oversight, and there's no question about that. It states it very clearly. It's not legally easy, even in my simple way of thinking. I can read that and understand that. It's right there. So the Lake of the Ozarks Business District can't even exist since there's no board. There's no board to make any choices, okay? There's no board to put anything on a ballot for any kind of a soccer complex or anything else. It doesn't exist.
I think the point which we disagree...
One point here, section eleven, sixty-seven point eleven seventy-five. "The advisory board of a Lake Area Business District on behalf of the district may, subsection six, make final decisions as to how the revenue derived from any tax to be imposed under section sixty-seven eleven seventy-seven shall be used."
I agree with that.
The advisory board makes those decisions.
I agree with that.
Okay.
That's absolutely correct. But there is no advisory board.
Well, that's, that's up to, to the members of the County Lodging Association.
I agree, but is it not public funds being spent? If public funds are being spent by an advisory board or contracted with someone else, they can contract with me to spend those funds if they'd like to.
And the statute, the statute agrees with that.
The problem is, there is no advisory board. That's my point.
That's not the problem of the county commission.
It is the problem of the commission.
That doesn't mean it automatically falls back on the county.
That's your opinion.
Yeah, Jim, what is it you would like to see the commission do? Because we feel like that we're, uh, other than with regard to that specific statute on oversight, where do you want us to go with this?
Well, I'm not Jim, but I will tell you where the...
Oh, Dave, I'm sorry.
Well, really, based on this statute, I think you guys have the obligation to suspend the flow of these public funds to this private entity, okay? Is it proper to give private funds, or give public funds to a private entity to be able to oversee?
County commission has no authority to suspend funds to any taxing entity. They can't suspend funds to the ambulance district. They can't suspend funds to the fire district, the school district.
I guess, I guess...
The voters, the voters that activate... They can't because there's a properly elected advisory board for those districts. There's no advisory board for the Camden County Lake of the Ozarks Business District, whatever fund you wanna call it.
Show me in the statutes where it says that the county commission can suspend tax funds to a political subdivision of the state.
They show, "Adopt rules and regulations for the collection and administration of the tax." And administration of the tax means you're responsible for how it flows.
And then, the other section says, "They can make final decisions as to how the revenue derived from any tax to be imposed shall be used."
That's an advisory board that's duly elected, which we don't have. That doesn't...
Okay, but, but here's, here's my point. It's just like, it's like a, the fire protection district. They have an elected board. An election takes place, they elect the board, and they're deciding. They're deciding what, how the funds that come, because Camden County collects them...
I understand.
And then it goes to the fire protection, mid-county fire protection district. They have a board, they make votes, they decide how they spend.
Agreed.
And if, so, with that same regard, the, the county government is involved in the process of collecting those funds and making sure that they are distributed to who they need to be distributed to.
Understood.
So if something's going on within, say, mid-county fire protection district, and they're either doing or not doing things the way, you know, those entities, like when there's a problem, they get independently audited by the state auditor.
I understand, I understand. That's one more point that I would like to get to.
You know, that's not something that, if they're a, they are, just like Charlie said, a separate political entity.
Correct.
So, uh, we have some obligation, just like with all of the public entities in the county, to collect the taxes and make sure that they get going to where they go to. What happens after that? Uh, I haven't seen where we have the ability to just reach in and, you know...
I don't disagree with anything you just said. The problem is, is that you're giving these funds to an entity that doesn't exist.
Okay.
It simply doesn't exist.
What would you like...
Well, then, then maybe you should attack...
Here's what I would like to do.
Maybe you should attack them.
I have, for five years.
Well, what was the result?
Well, I didn't pay the lodging tax. I believe I was required to pay the lodging tax. And for five years, I spent money on legal fees to, to fight that. Judge never ruled against me. If I was obligated to pay the lodging tax, it would've been a very simple process of a county requiring me to pay that.
But that doesn't involve the county commission.
You asked me, so I know.
Well, I know, I know.
Where it involves the county commission is that you're giving money to an entity that doesn't exist, and they're transferring that money to a private, to two private entities. Why do we need Tri-County Lodging, and why do we need the Lake of the Ozarks, or the Convention and Visitors Bureau?
Why do we need those entities? Since the voters set the tax at three percent, then the only obligation of the county collector was to collect those funds.
Right.
And then the treasurer disperses them to that entity.
I, I think there's enough things here that are questionable that we should demand, and you should petition for a special audit from the state auditors.
Yeah, Dave, this is, a lot of this stuff is so old that, you know, I don't know, honestly, I'll just tell you, I don't know that much about the issue.
I think this would have to be hashed out in court. I mean, the county commission is not going to presume to step in and stop the flow of funds to a political organization that was set up by state statute. We don't have that kind of authority. So, if these, if these regularities that you described exist, they probably should be hashed out in court.
Okay, so we're okay with the fact that there's an advisory board scanning public funds that has no authorized election and no certified election?
Why did you say that?
That's what we're doing when we allow it to continue. That's what we're doing when we allow this to continue.
Yeah, but there would have to be, you would have to show, you'd have to somehow or other show evidence that that was actually going on.
Go ask Roland Todd. He'll tell you how they're doing their elections. He's never certified an election for this board, never. Not one time has this board election been certified. Is that not...
On which board are you talking about?
I'm talking about the advisory board for the Lake of the Ozarks Area Business District. Excuse me, Tri-County Lodging. Depends on what day it is.
You're asking the county commission to do something they have, do not have the authority to do.
I don't know that I agree with that conclusion.
That's fine.
Do they have the authority to go ask Roland for the certification of certified election for the Lake of the Ozarks Area Business District Advisory Board? Do they have that authority?
Any citizen has the authority to go ask.
And what if the answer is no, I haven't? What does that mean to the commission?
It may look bad, but the commission has no authority to, to step in and do anything.
So the commission can't ask for an audit for this, for this situation?
A private citizen can. I mean, if you get enough petitions and...
I'm aware of that. So basically, you're telling me we can have an election any way we want? Anybody can spend my funds if they want to?
No, but, no, we're, I, we're definitely not saying that. We're just saying that if it's not being conducted like with any other political subdivision, and I'm just picking on big county because I know them fairly well. If something's going on there, uh, that would, that is improper, it would be a matter of like the state auditor to determine that, and, and then, at some point in time, if something's, you know, if something is not being done the way it's supposed to be, then you're gonna have to get to a point where a court will have to make, decide those issues. The commission...
Did you request a state audit for Camden County here a couple of years ago?
Yes, we did.
Because you wanted to make sure that the citizens understood that you were operating above board?
Yes.
You wanted to make sure there was no perception of corruption or whatever.
Right.
I don't really know what to tell them. So you were able to do that?
Yep.
But you're telling me you don't think you're able to do that for this, for this situation?
We don't have the authority over that.
They were asking that the audit be done themselves.
Yeah, we, we wanted an audit of us.
So the county clerk's office is not part of Camden County and not...
Well, I don't think that was, I don't think that was part of... I mean, we had a comprehensive state audit of our county, and they looked into everything to do with the flow of funds with regard to the distribution of funds of Camden County, and nothing came up out of that audit with regard to that. But, but at the same time, we were doing the same thing with the funds, the funds that big county got to operate. Well, they didn't investigate that either, you know? So that wasn't part of our audit.
Right.
Yeah, Dave, we were running into this, I've had, in the last three years I've been in office, I've had several people talk because they would have some problem with the fire district or some problem with an ambulance district. And I had to tell them basically the same thing. I said, I sympathize with you, I understand, but we simply don't have the authority to do anything about it. And being a commissioner is, being a commissioner is strange. In a lot of ways, your authority and your power is very limited, very prescribed. In other ways, in other areas, it's spooky how much power you have. But this is, this is one of those places, we just don't have that authority. It's just like the other elected officials in the courthouse. We rarely have almost no authority over how they run their individual offices. All we do is suck their budget, you know? Because the people elect them, put them in office, and so they give...
I mean, we get calls all the time. People come, they wanna talk about this office for that.
I understand the fires you guys have to put out on a daily basis, and I appreciate that.
You know...
And I, I agree, and you're absolutely right, obviously, that when people call you and complain about the fire district, the ambulance district, that's kinda out of your thing. They need to go to that board. My point has always still been the same. Who does somebody who has a problem with the Lake of the Ozarks Area Business District go to? Because there is no duly elected board. And elections are kind of an important thing. It's kind of one of those foundations of our country that we have the assurance that there's gonna be fair elections that are properly conducted. That's how the people are able to voice their opinion on things.
I agree.
That is not being done with the Lake of the Ozarks Area Business District Advisory Board.
I agree.
So you're basically saying taxation without representation?
Pretty much, yes.
That's what he's saying. I think what you'd have to do is a group of people who are affected by the tax would need to take... I think you guys would have to take that to court, because a judge has the authority to do something about it.
So this statute, you guys are gonna continue to not bother to adopt rules and regulations for the collection and administration of this tax?
Well, I mean...
We're gonna do that. We'll look into that.
It's right there. It's right there in the statute.
Okay.
You are tasked with adopting rules and regulations for the collection and the administration of that tax.
Which can be overruled by the Camden County Business District.
If it existed, yes.
Yes.
And see, that, that. I don't, I don't know that it doesn't exist.
Have them prove that it exists before you give them.
I think we, we kind of disagree on that point, and that's kind of the sticking point for the whole thing. So how do we resolve that between us? Well, I think we would all agree that for a public entity like the Lake of the Ozarks Area Business District, there would have to be an election that follows state statutes. Can we agree on that? You're not gonna agree on that?
No, I would agree on that, that it would have to follow what's prescribed in chapter sixty-seven, because that sets out how the members are elected to, to the advisory board.
It doesn't say how, it just says that they are.
Six members shall be elected by members of the County Lodging Association.
Which is this group.
Okay. Well, you, you, you're saying the voting's not being handled properly?
I'm not saying that, I am telling you that, and you can spend.
Yeah, we don't know that.
You can spend five minutes and know that. If you, if you want to, if you have the will to do that, you can immediately go to Roland's office and ask him if these elections are held according to state statutes, and he's going to tell you no. He's told us that in depositions.
I don't, I don't know that.
Well, I'm telling you that, you can do that. I can wait here while you go do it.
We can do it right now if you'd like to. We'll go ask.
Yeah.
Sure.
Jim, we're gonna do two things. Dave, Dave, I don't know why.
You're telling me.
I know. We're gonna look into the issue about, with regard to the elections, and whether or not the process is being done properly. And we're going to also look into the obligation of the commission under that statute to see what our obligations are. We'll have Charlie look at it and come up and give us a written opinion about what we can do and what we can't do. This has never been brought up before, so we're kind of in uncharted territory here.
I understand.
And I'm in over my head right now.
I, I get the same reaction that you guys give me from everybody when I bring this up. And then when you have time to look at it, you're gonna realize that all these things are going on.
I want our minute keeper to make, to make sure that we note that we're going to look into those two items.
Yes.
Uh, the commission's authority under that statute with regard to the, um, rules and regulations that we may or may not have authority to set up, and we're also gonna look in to see whether elections are being held in accordance with the law.
We need to see if we have policies.
But, but if they're not?
We can't do anything about it.
You can't do anything about it.
I mean, we will look into it, but if, if they're not being held in accordance with the law.
That's up to the members of the district to determine.
If there aren't no policies, do you need to get them written? Just so we've got them. If they weren't written way back then, why is there?
Yeah, in, in twenty twelve, for our discovery, there was no written, not the commission, you know, no written rule.
Going all the way back to the beginning.
Okay.
Well, the last I was involved with was in twenty twelve, so if it hasn't happened between twenty twelve and now.
When was this, when was this lodging district established?
Nineteen ninety-three.
Wow, okay.
And, and again, I, it, it's too much into the weeds to go into that at this point, but.
Yeah, okay.
I would submit that that was never properly formed in the first place. Okay? If you read the state statutes and then see what was actually done, I think you'll agree.
Okay.
We could let that sit.
Okay.
But just, this statute that, that says that you have, you have to adopt these rules and regula, or rules and regulations for the collection and the administration of the tax. So that, to me, gives you an awful lot of authority. That gives you the authority to stop the flow of that money to the entity, and that gives you the authority to stop their spending on any of those funds as well. And a commission, one commission, one commissioner to be authorized for any emergency spending or anything that would be required of any of that time.
Okay.
Thank you, John.
Oh, any other resort owners here want? Uh? Gail?
How long would it take to get that feedback that you were talking about?
That was one of my questions. Yeah. Yeah. It's kind of thrown out there. I'm Gail Griswold, I am Shire McFarlane, I've been here, sorry, I'm shaking, I'm like doing this stuff, um, Riverburg, and I'm also a citizen of Camden County. We have seen a lot of information come to us in a short period of time, and I'm asking you to audit the TCLA. And I'm just asking, you don't have to do it, you can frown at me all you want, but you don't have to do it. But whatever you decide to do and do look into, when are we gonna find out what that information is? And even if they're not doing it right, can we use your information and then take that to the state auditor?
Well, anything that we have done will be a matter of public record.
Okay, and when can we get that back?
Um, Charlie, well, I mean, I guess I can look into it right away, can we?
Sure.
Yep. I mean, we'll try to figure out something within a probably couple of weeks or something as to.
Uh, how about forty-eight hours? We don't have two weeks. We have three different counties with different language on each ballot misleading our voters from entities that shouldn't even be allowed to be getting on the ballot. This is, here are our citizens asking for help.
Well, it's, it's on the ballot, and it can't be taken off. It's too late to take it off.
That doesn't mean that we can't expose the information that should be exposed. And we need our legal, public officials to help us show what people are doing to the public. And if you're gonna wait two weeks after this vote, yes or no, whatever, I mean, we need, we need data, we need, we need to know that our city attorneys are actually doing their job.
I'm not sure, I mean, you're gonna have to look in, and I'm not even sure there's any case law in this system, Charlie.
I don't, I don't.
Well, we actually have David Huckman's stuff, I don't know how if that's case law or not, but that, he has depositions, he has interviews, he has legal.
Yeah, but wasn't that a out-of-court settlement? If it's an out-of-court settlement?
It was.
Yeah. It's, it's not, it's not binding in forty.
Doesn't mean you can't look at it, it just, doesn't mean you can't look at depositions that can probably be brought back to court. Can those depositions come back to court?
This was what, a five-year case?
Yes.
And you wanted me to review it in forty-eight hours?
I'm asking you to review the case in forty-eight hours, I'm asking you to have a better deadline than two weeks.
I'm, and I'm, I'm gonna speak for.
I'll get to it as quick as I can.
If, I may be speaking.
I can guarantee it's gonna be forty-eight hours.
That's fine, and then I have another question. Um, so, going back.
Yeah, Charlie's probably not going to be able to give us anything other than a legal opinion, and if you've been in business very long, you know that legal opinions, there's a lot of.
Yes, and we have our own legal opinions as well.
So, so, we're gonna look into what the obligations of the commission are, and how much authority that we have.
And will you be looking at Roland Todd's office and asking him, and will that be in your?
Those are, those are the, yes, those are the two things we promised. We're going to look into the election process with regard to a political subdivision.
I'm not going after Roland Todd, I don't know anything about him.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, the process needs to be looked at.
We're, we're going to look into those elections as a political entity, and how things were done with regard to that political entity, and we're going to look into what the commission's oversight authority is under the statute, based on either what the statute says. There may not be any, there may not be any case law. I bet it's not.
Okay, that's fine, great. So until then, can we file a temporary restraining order saying that you guys cannot administer any funds to the TCLA?
That'd be up to a court.
Well, I mean, yeah, that's a judge.
If you wanna sue the county, you can.
Okay, that is an option. And that would be a lawsuit to which county department, commission that is taking on the files?
Well, you talk to your own lawyer.
Okay.
I'm not here to give you legal advice.
Yeah, I realize that.
Probably all three counties do, it would be.
Wouldn't imagine that, uh, groups like that. Okay, um, so, yes, I want to see if I can say audit, or I want to audit the TCLA, I want to know if they can even govern the way they're governing, and then also how they're administering funds. We have the TCLA, we have Lake Area Business District, and we have a CBV, all in one building.
Yeah. I thi, I think you actually have the authority to go right to Nicole Galloway yourself immediately and request an audit.
Yeah, we can go straight to her, in Jeff City, right?
Right, right.
Okay, and also, we can get a temporary restraining order where none of those funds go to the TCLA.
Well, I mean, that'd be up to a judge.
Yeah.
Well, you.
But we can't.
And a restraining, if, if you're gonna sue.
Is it injunction, is it a writ injunction?
If you're gonna sue.
Yeah.
The county doesn't have that money.
But you, you're collecting it, so you can stop the administration of it, per state law.
Well, a judge would have to decide that.
That's, I mean, why not? County, county's not one, county's not for a suit.
Right, but a judge can stop you guys from giving it, it's too similar.
Judges, judges, whoever they want.
Yeah.
Can I just get clarification on one point?
Sure.
I'm sorry, Gail, just one point. Is it the commission's position that you do not have the authority to withhold these funds until it's determined whether it's proper?
I don't think, I know, I don't think any of us know that.
For sure.
Okay, so the answer is we don't know yet?
We don't know.
Fair enough, thank you. Sorry, Gail.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
Anybody else, uh, with regard to, because we were basically asking information, we, we weren't sure why we were having a meeting here, but small resort owners?
So those three entities, how many of them share the same board members?
I don't know that answer.
All of them.
So all three of them are?
TCLA board is also like the Ozarks Business District board. So how do they fire themselves and contract with someone else to administer the tax? They can't.
So it's a public entity and then a private entity?
Run by the same people?
Switch your hat.
Right.
Sounds like a good business to me.
I'm Mark Martin, I have a vacation rental, and that's how I got sort of interested in this, but, um, I know that you guys don't, um, have any authority, as you're saying, over the county clerk, but I just want to reiterate what Dave is saying, because I think you do need to hear that again, so that you can understand that we don't believe this is a duly elected board. We don't believe that the Lake Area Business District, Camden County Business District even exists, because of going back, you know, how long, from nineteen ninety-three, there weren't certified elections. We don't know if people can actually vote. Um, we don't know if the folks that are on the board are even certified to be on the board. Um, but I will explain to you, as he said, exactly what happened. So this, it says that they're supposed to notify all of the small category, I'm in the small category, of elections. You can nominate somebody to do it, that's what it, to, to be on the board, um, it's supposed to be on the list, and then you go up and you can vote. Now, as Dave said, the ways you can vote are to show up at their meeting, or you can come to the, um, county clerk's office. This is my experience, and I just, I know you're not in charge of it, and I wish that Roland were here, because, um, th, this is exactly what happens. I went into the county clerk's office, and I said, I would like to vote for Tri-County Lodging. They said, what are you talking about? I said, I'm sorry, I would like to vote for the Camden County Business, Lake Area Business District. And they said, uh, hello, Sue, Sue, you know, does anybody know what, what she's talking about? And I said, and, and finally, somebody came forward and said, yeah, yeah, okay, yeah, I think there's a manila envelope on top of that file cabinet over there with some ballots in it. And so, indeed, as Dave describes, um, I was given, pulled out a list of eligible lodging establishments, I suppose, and she said, find your name on the list. I mean, I could have been anyone. She didn't say, can I see ID, do I have any way of knowing that you're actually someone who could vote in this? And I could have asked twenty of my friends to come in and say, pick a name off the list, because she just said, sign your name, I don't, I didn't even sign my name, she just said, check your name off of the list. And so there was something that looked like this, um, that she gave me, that was a ballot, not a certified ballot that you, you know, that's gonna be run through anything, and I checked, I checked the name off the list that I wanted to vote for. And then they took that envelope and they stuck it, you know, stuck my ballot in the envelope, and they put it back up on top of the file cabinet. Um, I had spoken with, who is supposedly my elected representative, Michael Spriggs, who, um, owns Point Randall Resort, and he said that, then what happens is that they, Rebecca Rupert, um, comes over and she picks up those ballots from the clerk's office, and she drives them over to the TCLA office, and they count the ballots. Um, she does, and Jim Davinson, and whoever, um, and while they're there, also, other people can show up, I guess, on the day that they're tabulating these ballots, and they can vote, um, while they're there. Okay, so that's how it happens. Now, if that is what state statute says, then I suppose that we need to challenge state statute. Whoever wrote this, that is exactly, you know, how it says, you, you're supposed to elect these people that are spending one point six million dollars of Camden County money, that's coming into Camden County, and these are public funds, and we don't have certified elections for them. And if that's the way the state statute reads, then we will challenge it. Because this is not okay to be having an uncertified election for public funds that we don't even know if the people that are voting are actually eligible to vote. Um, many people on that list are out of the state of Missouri. They don't live here. They can't live here because they, they live in, you know, Iowa, and they own a vacation home here. And so they're getting to vote in our election, supposedly, if they drag down here, I guess, or maybe if they mail off for something, and maybe that's legal. I don't know. You know, maybe you can do that, but I think that, that's, a, and that's what we have to look into. And I'm not asking you guys for an answer for it, but I will just say one, one other thing. Um, have you guys ever appointed somebody to the board, to the Lake Area Business District? No? Okay. Well, state statute says that, um, there is supposed to be someone from the county serving on that board. Okay, that's.
I think, I think there was already on.
Okay, well, that's good.
But I don't, I don't know.
That's good, because it says, the member who is a member of the governing body of the county shall serve for a term of two years and may be reappointed, but shall only serve as long as he continues in his office as a member of the governing body of the county.
Greg, I think you're a known advisor to the board, aren't you?
You know, somebody from the county that's an elected person.
I thought Beverly Thomas was at one time.
Oh, I think that is. Currently.
No, it's great.
Heck, you're on the board.
I do, congratulations. I do, congratulations. Right, so it's just that...
Wait a minute, what did we just read there? How that occurred that I was on the board?
It says, "State statute sixty-seven eleven seventy-five." Advisory Board Established Members' Duties and Powers. It talks about how the person is from the county is supposed to be on the board. You're not a voting member, but you're supposed to be on the board.
To make sure things are running right.
So you're supposed to be over, somebody from the county is supposed to be overseeing a representative from the county, making sure that this whole thing is copacetic here. So, "The member who is a member of the governing body of the county shall serve for a term of two years and may be reappointed, but shall only serve as long as he continues in his office as a member of the governing body of the county."
Who does the reappointing?
Same people that voted in, I guess.
I don't, the same people that are supposed to...
People that vote the TCLA members in.
I guess the same people are supposed to collect and administer the funds.
But that's why we're here talking to you, because your name's all over.
If you appointed yourself, but probably he doesn't know this.
Well, we were never, the commission never voted on anyone being a member. That I, since I've been here.
Well...
I mean, does the, does the TCLA board, do they vote on that?
You're asking the wrong person.
They won't tell us what to do.
Right, as a private entity, you would make that...
This man, I work for Tri-County Lodging Association.
I do not work for Tri-County Lodging Association.
Who do you work for today?
I work for the convention.
Let's keep this, let's keep it up here.
You guys can come up and have your...
Are you on the board?
No, I'm not.
Let's stop the discussion back there so we can keep this under control.
Yeah.
I don't want it to devolve into a shouting match.
Right, it's, it's not, you know, obviously, we just have concerns, we have concerns.
The point I want to make is that since I've been here, the commission hasn't voted on anyone being a member or not a member of that board.
Okay.
How long have you been here?
Well, I'm in my fifth year.
Okay, okay.
So the commission hasn't made a decision as to who will be the representative. And I'm not sure that, based on what you read there, that we're the person that decides.
But shouldn't you know?
But I suppose it should know. I mean, it's whoever's administering, but it doesn't say. This statute...
Yeah, the statute doesn't say who is, who does the appointing.
Right, and I think at the end of the day, that's the thing. The statute needs to be challenged if it is not governed by the, what political subdivision you're supposed to be governed by, which is, you know, election laws and people being able to look at public funds. Because it's not okay for the, whatever is the Lake Area Business District or Camden County, you know, Lake Area Business District that is, you know, taking in these funds. Like, I guess the question, do you have any idea who the county writes the check to? Like, so I pay my lodging taxes. I own a vacation rental, that's a huge contentious thing in and of itself, but I pay them. And so when I write my tax, I write it to Camden County Collector.
Right.
And so I just am wondering when the Camden County Collector, and it's probably a question for them, and I apologize, but that, who they write the check to then? Do they write it to the Lake Area, Camden County Lake Area Business District?
Well, ultimately, the...
It's distributed by the treasurer.
The treasurer would distribute the funds.
Yeah.
The treasurer...
So the treasurer is writing a check to somebody.
The county treasurer.
The county treasurer, okay, thank you, right. So I would be curious as to whether she's writing this check to the Lake Area, Camden County Lake Area Business District. Because then what's supposed to happen, just so we're on the same page with state statute, the reason that we're upset, okay, is because according to state statute, the funds that come in to a given category, so there's a small category, and what that consists of in state statute is one to fifty rooms. The medium category is fifty to three hundred rooms, and the large category is three hundred, above three hundred rooms. So according to state statute, those funds are supposed to be used for the category which collects them. Somebody can give me the number, I'm sure, but I think it exceeds six hundred thousand dollars that is collected by the small category, and that's tabulated. In addition to that, we believe that a lot of the medium category is being populated by small because Russell Verdet and Mark Krantz, I believe, own a large management company that has over fifty, you know, vacation rentals that they own. Or, I'm sorry, they don't own them, they manage them. And so they take those funds and populate the medium category with that too. Whether that's okay or not, I don't know, but the fact is that those are like, you know, one condo, you know, two, a condo, and so, but those, so the point being that each fund is supposed to take in a small category. And so we've got, for the small category, we have Michael Spriggs, who's against this. He voted and put it on the ballot, but if you want to go talk to him, he fought and fought and fought against this to not have the lodging tax be laid upon the small resorts whenever we're gonna build the soccer complex. Sue Weston-Hayworth is in favor of it.
So what you, excuse me a second, so what you're saying is that lodging tax funds that are collected from, say, small resorts, is it supposed to be spent on marketing for small resorts?
Yes, yes. Now, there is vague language too that says it can be used for general tourism if they choose for that. But there's, the state statute is pretty clear that says that the, that the category that collects it is supposed to be the category that benefits from it. And we do not see, I speak for myself, I don't see how I'm going to benefit from having this soccer complex when I can't get an answer about whether my, you know, home will be considered five rooms or one room or what with regards to, you know, to stay to play models so the teams have to stay in a place that is, you know, okay by the booking company.
I have a question for you, this is kind of off topic, but we have so many short-term rentals now?
Yes.
Do you think they should be classified under small resorts? Do you think that they should have a separate classification?
I personally would like to see them have a separate classification. I think it would solve a lot of the issues. I think that many of us don't feel like we have a representative because I feel like there's been some lobbying done to kind of regulate short-term rentals. And I am fully in favor, I mean, shocking to anyone, of paying the tax because I don't want to take a ride on the backs of these small resort owners. I appreciate what they do for tourism, and I would like to also contribute to that. But we do not feel like the vacation rental homes are represented in any fashion because it's not the same as having like, somebody in the medium category who has five hundred, you know, properties or whatever. Their interests are not the same as somebody who's, I own one. I own and operate one, so yes, I would like to see that split off personally.
Thank you.
Well, I do want to make sure that there's a note taken with regard to how the representative of the political subdivision of Camden County, who does the appointing of that member? And whether the commission has to vote to appoint a member? Obviously, there's a term that exists. I mean, who's doing, I don't know who's doing the appointing, and that statute doesn't appear to make it clear.
I mean, I could read through it all again, but I have not seen that, no, no, so...
Okay, I want to know that, you know?
Yeah, so...
Yeah, especially if I'm on there.
So, yeah, and I mean, I, you know, I personally feel that, I would ask too that you look into the administration of the funds. I think that that is more meaningful, that that word is more meaningful than the levity that we're giving it. And I, and I don't want you to think that we're blaming you for this. You guys came into this, and this has been going on since ninety-three. And it all seems to be going along. The problem is, I think they kicked the bear, you know what I mean? Like, it's like, okay, three percent is going to tourism, you know, we can, you know, we can let this kind of slide, and then all of a sudden, we're gonna double it and we don't want it, and we weren't asked if we wanted it. And it's just on the ballot, and so that will upset people. And now we're starting, I mean, now we're starting to look at, well, what's, what is going on? Who is my representative? How do they even get elected? How, how is this running like that? And so I think that we object to the administration of the funds and how those have been allocated. And so I implore you to look into that and see if you have any authority to, to take, to stop, you know, administering the funds. And maybe you guys might want to ask the reporter, or the treasurer also, like, who are you writing the check to? And then how does that get, because you are in charge of administering that and, and you're in charge of collecting it and administering it, so... And, and yes, I totally understand, once it gets to where it's going, you have, you don't have control of that. And I wouldn't want you to, no offense, but, yeah, that should be left to the, yeah, you don't want to micromanage that, right, so...
I have another question, if you don't mind.
Yeah.
I've seen where several people, people whose opinions I respect, have said that even though this lodging tax obviously will be based on tourists, I've heard people say that, that the establishment owners like yourself would still have to pay the tax.
Right, well...
Can you explain that to me?
Sure, I mean, I looked at that a couple of different ways. One is that, for instance, I already have, and I have a high-end rental, and I don't apologize for that, because it's like, if you came out to the lake and you rented six hotel rooms for your big family for the whole week, it's gonna cost you, you know, five, six, seven thousand dollars at a hundred and fifty dollars a night. So I have a big property, it's twenty acres, and I welcome large families that come to my property. Year over year, I keep my rates the same. I, I, you know, I have returning families, and people think, well, they're rich, they pay all this money to come, and it's like, no, they ask me for discounts. They want, you know, to avoid the VRBO service fees, can we book directly? It's just fees upon fees upon fees. Right now, a, my home would be, it's around five hundred and some dollars. It's, I'm not gonna apologize, like I said, it's seven thousand dollars a week. And it's like renting six hotel rooms for a week. So it is five hundred and some dollars in taxes right now. It'll be over eight hundred dollars in taxes that they will have to spend. And so my choice is to raise my rates that much or to absorb that. But one way or the other, that two hundred and ten dollars should be in my pocket, I believe, and not in the county's pocket, and on top of that...
I still don't understand how that, how that would result in you paying the three percent.
Well, right now, I have eight weeks rented out already, okay? So that will be over sixteen hundred dollars that I have to pay. Because I'm not going to go back to those people. If this tax gets passed, I'm not gonna go back to those people that I have a written contract with and say, "Hey, by the way, we just passed..."
So you would have to...
I will have to come up with the sixteen hundred dollars.
What about moving forward after that?
Right, moving forward? Well, I guess I get to decide whether I'm going to raise the rates by, you know, I'm gonna raise their taxes by two hundred and ten dollars, or if I'm gonna... Right, or if I'm gonna pay myself that two hundred and ten dollars.
Opportunity cost. Plus there's credit card fees, when you take in the tax.
So I'll, I will owe, yeah, I will owe three percent, because the credit card fee's a three percent on two hundred and ten dollars. So I have to pay that for sure, that definitely comes out of my pocket. But, yeah, we look at it more honestly as opportunity cost, as she said. Like, we're gonna spend one point six million dollars on one thing and we're not gonna be able to promote tourism with that otherwise. But, and I look at it as a, as an advantage. Like, other places that have super high taxes, we're of value to them. I, I get mad when I get online, I've said this, when a hotel room is advertised as ninety-nine dollars and I want two nights, and I go on there and I say, "Oh, so it's gonna be about two hundred dollars, and it's two hundred and fifty dollars for the taxes and fees." I will literally go and look at another property in another locale. And if it comes up, a two hundred dollars today is two hundred and twenty dollars, I'm probably gonna book that. So right now, we enjoy a two percent advantage over Miller County, right? So, I mean, I guess the best way to look at it is, if I asked you, would you rather, you've got two identical properties sitting on the exact same piece of land in, around the Lake of the Arrows, one sitting in Miller County, one sitting in Camden County. Miller County's tax is five percent, Camden County's tax is three percent, all right? Exact same properties, you want to put a hotel there, which land do you pick? Miller County or Camden County?
Pick Camden County.
You pick Camden County because...
Probably taxes are cheaper too.
Those two dollars...
Eleven cents per hundred in Camden County, eighteen cents per hundred.
Right, because those two dollars are in your pocket. They're either in your pocket or they give you a competitive advantage. And that is the only way that I can look at that, is to say, I enjoy right now a competitive advantage over, you know, other areas. And so if you would, anyone who would say, "Yes, I would build my place in Miller County" if they were two identical properties, then you should vote for this. But anybody who says, "Absolutely not, I would not put my home, I would not put my hotel in Miller County, I'd put it in Camden County because the taxes are lower," and hotels, look at that kind of stuff. When they decide if they're gonna come here, you think they want to put their hotel in Camden County or Miller County right now? They want to put it in Camden County because the taxes are two percent lower. And that's money they can charge their guests and still be under Miller County. So to me, that's, that's the way I look at it. I know people say it's not that much. Two percent adds up, adds up, and if you can keep that in your pocket and not pay for it, then that's a win for me, so I hope that makes sense.
Basically, the folks here wanted to speak with the commission. You obviously had some issues you wanted to direct to the commission, the concerns. And I think those have been kind of pretty well outlined by, do you have anything else?
Yeah, I don't, no, I don't. And I thank you so much, because it seems like this is not altogether your issue.
Well, honestly, I mean, this has been, it's been going on since nineteen ninety-three and none of this has ever come up before. So, you know, the commission deals with things literally every day that come out of the blue that we've never seen before.
And I think you have, you know, and I applaud you because...
And lots of times, and I mean, if it has to do with the sheriff or the collector or someone like that, you know, lots of times, we don't have any authority. And we're not, honestly, we're really not sure where we're, where we stand here. But we will find out.
And, and that means so much, because I'm sure Dave, I don't know Dave real well, but I'm sure that he probably approached the commission...
Call me Jim.
You look like a Jim.
Jim, I'm sorry.
But...
How's your daughter Taylor doing by the way?
Yeah, I'm sure he probably approached the commission and, and they probably didn't take an interest in it at that time. So the fact that you guys even took the time to set aside and come and hear our concerns, you know, sometimes just being heard is like nine cents at the battle.
Well, just, just keep in mind, if there's a, there's a group in this county that wants to meet with the commission, we're gonna meet.
We'll meet, we work for you.
So, yeah.
Can I ask another question?
Yeah, if somebody else...
Okay.
Yeah, I mean...
So we're going back to looking at how everything was set up and everything. Charlie, you're the city attorney, right?
County.
County, sorry, county attorney. Did you have anything to do with the original language when the Lake Area Business District was set up? Did you contribute to that language?
Did I contribute anything to the language?
Yeah, did you help with anything, advise anything with the original setup of the business district?
At one time, I did do work for the Lake Association.
Okay.
We, our firm did do some work for Tri-County Lodging initially.
Okay.
But I didn't have anything to do with the setting up of the...
I just want to make sure there wasn't any conflict of interest.
I've not done anything for Tri-County Lodging or the Lake's, Lake Area Business District or Camden County Business District in years.
But you have.
For the Lake Association and some work for Tri-County Lodging.
Yes, so you have done some work for Tri-County Lodging Association?
Early on.
But you have.
Yeah.
And was this in nineteen ninety-three when it was originally all set up?
I don't recall, I have to look back.
Well, I think that that should be part of your research.
I think it was initially...
That could be the homework.
What's that?
I think you should include that in the homework, and then if there's a conflict of interest, I expect you guys to do about that.
I don't consider that I have a conflict now.
Yeah, but when you look back at what you did before...
I'm not gonna look back, because I don't consider...
You would refuse yourself if you thought there was a conflict of interest?
If I thought there was a conflict, I would step aside. Ethically, I would have to.
Okay.
But I don't consider it to be a conflict.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anybody else?
Yes, sir.
We're here.
Hello, my name's Megan, and I'm a manager at a resort in Morgan County. And so I, I won't take much of your time, but I'm, I'm here because I...
Could you give us your last name, please?
Oh, do it, D E W I T T. And I'm sorry that you did not know, it surprises me too that you did not know that you are a non-voting advisor on the TCLA board. But that's one of the reasons I came, because Morgan County does not have anyone listed as a non-voting advisor, but you were. So that is why I came, and I'm sorry that you weren't aware of that. But I just, one thing that I wanted to point out on behalf of Camden County was I know that it sounds, it looks like they're budgeted to receive in lodging tax dollars for Camden County, about one point six million per year. That's what sort of flows through, is that correct, Camden County? And so what's on the ballot is doubling that, so, you know, you're potentially looking at maybe four million, you know, per year coming through Camden County. And in my search through the board minutes of the TCLA, where that money eventually ends up, that they haven't been audited for four years. In my reading of the state statute, the business districts do need to have a once every five years audit. But as a, as a former financial aid director who managed a lot of federal funds, and as a former school board member who, you know, really pushed for thorough annual audits, it concerned me that with so much money of Camden County's money going in there, that they had, the board actually has voted the last three years to not do an audit. And to especially vote for that, to not do an audit before you're gonna put a doubling of funds on the ballot, I just wanted to make sure that that fact was known. So I appreciate you allowing me the time.
You're talking about TCLA?
Correct.
Okay, not the Lake Area Business District?
Correct, I haven't been able to find any business district meeting minutes.
Because they're the same thing, that's the problem.
Think that's what Dave was saying.
Same people, the same thing, and they just, they'll have that, they go away, they come back five minutes later, and then they put a different hat on and say, "Okay, now I'm talking about..."
You can't be a private entity in a, in a...
That's the problem, right? That's why we're asking about it.
And then, just my last point, because Morgan County mirrors Camden County in that we currently sit at a three percent and are being asked to double to six percent. So I just, I wanted to give you one real life example that, that really has come to play the last week for my resort. We just booked a family reunion from Fairfield, Iowa. It's three older siblings, their children, and their grandchildren. And they booked nine cabins each for a week. And that, they're currently going to pay three hundred and ninety dollars in lodging tax. And so we're gonna be asking them to double that. So, you know, we all know that the family reunions are sort of a big red and butter for both of our counties as far as travelers go. So I just wanted to put those numbers in your head so that as you're looking, you know, as a large family reunion, you know, they're potentially looking at going from a four hundred dollar lodging tax to an eight hundred dollar for one of those group type bookings, so...
How, how, what's their overall bill gonna be?
Uh, thirteen, thirteen thousand, yeah, yeah. So, just to leave you with a real life example there. So again, I really appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Okay. We're here, so, anyone who want to speak up? I mean, obviously, we've identified a couple of things that the commission needs to look into, but.
By the way, we need to move along, I think we've got another important event to look at.
I'll keep it short.
Oh, yeah, that's all right.
My name's Jacob Durick, I represent medium-sized resorts, and I just want to go on record to basically say that what they say goes with us too, so it's not just the small resorts, we're concerned as well, there's been a lot of information brought to light, and we're concerned, so, I just want to go on record for that.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
I just, I wanted to say something, because I was reading, I've been listening, my name's Nancy Stewart, it's just really short, and maybe it should be directed at Roland Todd. When I'm listening, I hear Tri-County Lodging Association, I hear Lake Area Business, and I don't have a lodge, but I'm, I'm, we're being asked to vote, as a citizen here in County, we have the right to vote on it, so when I go look through the ballot, it says Camden County Business District, so I'm like trying to figure out who all these entities are, I can't find nothing on the internet about Camden County Business District, when I punch in Lake Area Business District, it takes me right over to TCLA, and it's like, who are we voting for and who's getting this money, because from the ballot to the Lake Area Business and care, uh, TCLA, it isn't clear, this is like clear as mud, and so I'm thinking, if I can't figure out who's getting this money, I very, I doubt that anybody that's checking yes or no knows who they're voting for and who's getting the money, because of the different names that they're going under, it's crazy, I've never, and it's not clear, so, and I, I challenge you, go on your phone and Google Camden County Business District, you find nothing, if you go Lake Area Business District, you find them, and then you see a slash, C-O-T-C-L-A, and if this is a not-for-profit entity, and we're supposed to have an advisory board, you know, because we're voting to give these people money, and whether I have a lodging thing or not, you're asking me to say yes or no, or vote or not vote, for something that I can't even find exists, and that's kind of a problem.
Yeah, okay. All right.
Thanks.
Can I ask how you're finding, what's your findings are found, how will be communicated?
Uh, you know, the commission, we're going to get a written opinion from the county attorney, and then the commission's going to make that opinion.
Put it on the website.
So, we don't really know kind of where we're at on this right now.
I understand.
I don't know the extent of what the commission's authority is, but keep in mind, that is a separate political entity, the Lake Area Business District is a separate political entity, and I just, honestly, I don't know where we said, this is just kind of.
I'm just wondering, once, like I said, whether it's forty hours or two weeks, or the case may be, once you find that out, how will that be communicated, that was all I was asking.
We're going to, look, we're going to need to look into this right away, we'll try, and Gail, we'll try to get, figure out where we're at on this as quickly as we can, but, you know, this is kind of new terr, we're new territory.
Yep.
This has never been brought up.
We're all new to it last week, most of us.
Okay, all right. Folks, anybody else?
I do have one question, Mr. Mackley, how will you determine whether the Lake of the Area Business District is a entity? What do you have to go back on to, to prove this?
I don't know that it is, because it's, you're referring to the Lake, Lake of the Ozarks Business District, I think it's the same thing as Camden County Business District, I mean, Camden County Business District is the, is the entity that asked for the issue to be put on the ballot, it wasn't the Lake of the Ozarks Business District, it was Camden County Business District. Yeah, I don't know.
What will you do in your research to find that they are a viable entity, that they've had meetings, that they elect, properly elected a board, how will you, how will you do that for making this?
I'll take my direction from the county commission, I don't know how deep they want me to get into that, so they want me to look at minutes, so they try to find the history of it.
I would like to know who put this on the ballot, all three, all three counties, I, we'll, we'll contact Morgan and Miller.
Who just wanted to be right?
Who put this on the ballot and did it?
Okay.
I mean, I know that. I don't know who put it on the ballot, but the, the, I don't know who came and see.
Yeah.
All I, all I've got is a copy of the resolution and order.
I know that you all said that you don't have the authority to stop the funds to the TCLA, but what's to stop these owners from all putting their money in escrow accounts until they get it sorted out? I mean, they're still collecting, they're still putting.
You know, that's, that's what it's.
That's what I would do if I were on, not good at escrow account, I would give them that.
What we're going to do is we're going to look into what the commission's obligations under the statute are in terms of oversight, and, and.
But that is an option.
Just to be clear, you did not say that you don't have the authority, you said you don't know if you have the authority.
We, we need to figure out where we're at.
Yeah, I wouldn't say absolutely we don't, I would say I don't, because I don't know at this point.
And if you find that, if you find that Camden County Business District or whoever put this on the ballot, since this is new information to us just right now, does not exist, where do we go from there?
I don't have that answer yet.
I don't.
Because, potentially, we pulled this from a vote November fifth, you cannot vote for something that does not exist.
You're asking all these people to pay taxes, I mean, the, the hard part is, when you look at these people that are paying this tax, and everyone says no one's paying the tax, I mean, the tourists are, these people should be the ones that should have voted, but not only do they not get a vote, you know, they didn't even know there was an election, and the election that was held is completely loosey-goosey.
At least the vote to put on the ballot to.
And so the issue is, they're the ones that are actually going to pick up this burden, but what they're saying is they've not been represented at all, so to now learn there's a Camden Town Business District, in addition to Lake of the Ozarks Business District, and they're the ones that put it on the ballot, this is insane, I mean, this is, these people need representation.
So, next up is Morgan and Miller.
Keep in mind that the election authority is the county clerk.
Do you advise him also?
Excuse me?
Are you advising him also on this issue?
He has not asked me anything about this issue.
But you are the legal representation of the county clerk as well? Being, being the Camden County.
I mean, yeah, if he came to me and asked me to, to look into it, I would.
I'm sure he does that.
Is that, is he over there, do you go over there?
I'd like, I'd like to say one thing, um, I understand everybody has concerns about TCLA, I am not part of TCLA, I'm with the Commensurate Visitor Bureau, but if you want to mediate answers, the TCLA meetings are public, there's one tomorrow at nine AM, then I would suggest you go there and ask the people at TCLA.
We could ask them, but that's.
We don't care about TCLA, they're a private entity, just like the CBD is, they have no authority to send their lodging tax.
Okay, anyone else? Are we good?
I think it's.
All right.